I'm going to call this meeting to order the Mayor and Board of Commissioners for July the 23rd, 2019. Can I get the roll call, please?
Yes. Let the record show that you do have the form and all members are present.
Thank you. Will you rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we bow your heads with me for a brief prayer. Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of our town, on behalf of our residents, God. I hope that you'll continue to lead us in a Christ-like way, God. Be with our residents, be with our police department, fire and EMS, as well as our soldiers serving here and oversees, God. Be with us as we're here tonight and as we leave here this evening. In Jesus's name, amen. All right, first on the agenda is an executive session report from the Ethics Board on 7-9. Town Administrator?
Yeah, bear in mind, we don't get these very often. This is technically not something you have to vote on. It's just something that all closed meeting sessions of any board are supposed to be read at the next public meeting. The Ethics Board doesn't have public meetings, so the reports get read out at these meetings. So it's not something that you have to vote on, do approve or accept. So on July 9th, 2019, at 6:00 PM on the second floor of Town Hall, the Rising Sun Ethics Board met in executive session as provided for by the Maryland Open Meetings Act. The reason for the meeting was to discuss personnel. The members in attendance were Dave Fox, Chip Slayball, and Andrew Snyder. Motion to hold an executive session was made by Board Member Slayball, seconded by Board Member Fox. That motion carried 3 to 0. As discussed, the reason for the meeting was to discuss personnel, but it was also the organizational meeting. And just to back up, we all know that the Ethics Board has a role in not only the annual financial disclosure forms that had to be filled, but also in the election process. It's coming up in October. So they needed to have their organizational meeting. People in attendance at the meeting other than the board was the town attorney and myself. A action item, Board Member Slayball, seconded by Board Member Snyder, made a motion to nominate Dave Fox to serve as the Ethics Board Chairperson. That motion passed 3 to 0. Action number two, Board Member Dave Fox, seconded by Board Member Snyder, to nominate Chip Slayball to serve as the Ethics Board Vice Chair. With no other business before the board, a motion was made by Board Member Slayball, seconded by Board Member Snyder, to leave executive session. That vote passed 3 to 0. And a motion to adjourn the meeting was made by Board Member Slayball, seconded by Board Member Snyder, to adjourn the meeting, and that motion passed 3 to 0. The meeting was adjourned at 6:50 PM. And again, they were discussing the financial disclosure forms, and if there was any changes in the law, the state law, the town attorney was advising them that there's any changes in the state law that had to be addressed in any future financial disclosure forms. So it was basically an organizational meeting.
Thank you, Town Administrator. Tonight, we have no public presentations. We do have two resolutions under our business meeting items. Town Administrator, do you have those?
Yes, I do. So the first one that you have before you is Resolution 2019-05. And this basically is standard operating procedure. Under the town's charter and Code of Ordinances, there's a fiscal policy, and in that policy it determines who is authorized to sign checks and execute other financial instruments like bank boxes, so forth and so on. So it's not something that we normally have to do every year. It's just whenever there's a change in personnel. And in this particular case, because we are bringing all of the accounting services back into Town Hall, there was a need to make some changes to who the authorized signers are. So if this is good for the board, it can be read into the minutes.
All right. Commissioner Warnock? Okay. Do you want to read it into the record?
Sure. Resolution 2019-05, a resolution to update the approved and authorized persons to sign forms and contracts for the town of Rising Sun. I'll skip the boilerplate stuff all the way down to, whereas the Mayor and Commissioners previously adopted a fiscal policy manual which establishes policies and procedures for internal controls, and to ensure the timely processing of bills and collection of monies owed to the town and the reliability of financial processing, reporting, and accountability. And whereas the Mayor and Commissioners previously adopted Resolution 2017-01, and which established the general operation and guidelines for the establishment and maintenance of town safety deposit boxes, bank accounts, investment funds, and other similar financial instruments, and whereas the Mayor and Commissioners deem it necessary to update and to reaffirm by resolution these procedures, and whereas the Mayor and Commissioners wish to establish that Mayor Travis Marion, Commissioner August Pearson, and Town Administrator Calvin A. Bonnberger Jr. have prior authorization to sign any forms, contracts, or agreements on behalf of the town of Rising Sun for the establishment of safety deposit boxes and general banking and financial services for the town, to include checking and savings accounts, CDs, money markets, and other similar financial and investment instruments, and to perform all general activities associated therewith, to include serving as the required signatures on all checks, deposits, withdrawals, and fund transfers as needed, and in accordance with the town's fiscal policies. And be it further resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on 23rd day of July, 2019.
I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 2019-05, as read.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 2019-05 has passed. All right, the next resolution, Town Administrator?
All right, this one here, as part of our efforts to bring all the town's accounting financial activities back into our staff level, as I've reported in the past, we have secured financial software. We've done a lot of the hardware, purchasing of hardware and software to be able to do it. We've also filled the position of a treasurer slash administrative assistant, bookkeeper. And the last thing that we needed to do was, as part of us bringing this back in-house, although an audit is required every year of the town's finances, we wanted to add another extra layer into the integrity of the system by having someone come in every month and spend a couple of hours each month, basically looking over the shoulder of our staff to give them any technical assistance on some questions that might come up, but more importantly, to be reviewing how we are doing the task on a monthly basis, as opposed to the typical technique, which would be to wait till the end of the year and then do an audit that way. So we're basically going to be performing very, very small, mini audits on a monthly basis, followed up by the regular annual audit at the end of the year. And that's just to give us another layer of oversight as we embark down this road. So you're going to see in the resolution, the town solicited RFPs, request for proposals from accredited firms to provide that auditing service, and this is a staff's recommendation as contained in the resolution.
All right. Resolution 2019-06, a resolution award municipal auditing and financial oversight contract. I'm going to skip the boilerplates. Whereas Chapter 9 of the Code of Ordinances of the town of Rising Sun, titled Finance, Taxation, Business, and Trade, contains provisions that grant the Board of Commissioners with the power to appropriate municipal monies for any purpose with the powers of the council, and to levy, assess, and collect ad valorem property taxes or any type of tax allowed by law, and to have general management and control of the finances of the town. And whereas the town is required to provide for an annual audit of all financial records, accounts, and transactions involving town funds, and further meets those obligations by securing the services of a reputable accredited third party. And whereas the town created a request for proposal, RFP, to garner the interest to provide those services and to secure pricing for those services, consisting of monthly monitoring of town financials, journal entries, transactions, and other services as needed, and the end of the fiscal year audit, annual audit, as required to include the award of a contract for one-year terms that can be extended for additional years based upon performance. And whereas the town staff has reviewed the submittals and has determined that the submittal from Winrich, Cronin, and Sora, with an estimated first-year cost of $32,000, see attached cost sheet, to be the most qualified bid for those services. Therefore, be it enacted and resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners of the town of Rising Sun wish to award the contract for municipal auditing and financial oversight to the firm of Winrich, Cronin, and Sora, LLC. Now therefore be it further resolved that the Mayor and Commissioners introduced, passed, approved, and adopted this resolution on this 23rd day of July, 2019. Could I get a motion?
It's been moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion regarding? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Next is citizens' input. Would anyone like to speak this evening?
Yeah, I'm Bill Baur from Valleyview Village. Got a couple of questions here, reference to the park down off of Hopewell Road. We did all that work down there at that park, and it's a disgrace to just come down and look at how grown up it is around the creek beds. I mean, it's like, the weeds are like, that tall. I mean, it's like, are we just going to spend all that money to make that look decent, and then we're just going to let it go?
The design of it actually is above the bridge, is to let it, there's actually a buffer zone that's there as part of the design.
But from the bridge south to Hopewell Road, it's just...
For the first few years, it's supposed to be a buffer zone. Once it gets established, then we can mow it closer to the creek. But it's always supposed to have some, what a buffer zone, but there was a section of it that will be mowed a little closer to the creek, but it's...
Okay, because it just...
But it has to get...
Has a sore eye.
It needs like, it's like a two or three-year plan to establish.
All the way back up to the woods.
And then the other challenge we have, well, that's designed to be that way, but the other part of it, the other challenge is, this year, it won't stop raining. So we're having trouble mowing some trees.
Is that what was done? I mean, because that last rain, we had water across the roads. And I thought that was put in to prevent that. And I mean, I know we had a lot of rain, but that was supposed to prevent that. We spent all that money, and it didn't prevent it.
You can't prevent every single event. It's designed to prevent most of them. So it's reduced the number of events we've had.
But the biggest problem there, the biggest problem there was...
There's two pipes that run under that road that limit passing.
Right, and they were blocked. Yeah, that'd be something that's looked into to be kept...
That's County Road, we can't.
You can't clean it out? There's drain pipes?
We will clean it up, but that's...
Oh, okay. That's what I meant.
Yeah, but that's a contributing factor, but it's not the only factor. I mean, it was a really significant...
Oh, yeah, I know. I know it was. Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Warnock, too. I think also that was grant money that actually didn't come out of town money, did it?
Correct. It was paid for by the state. It's, you know, if you look at, last year was the wettest season on record in this area. We didn't have a single event last year where it flooded the park. This year, we've had two, but we've had significant, two significant rain events, and it wasn't just the town park that flooded. There's, you know, roads that were flooded out, and there's bridges that were washed out in Harford County, and, I mean, so the whole area has had some really significant rain events in the last few weeks that were, we were told that it would address about 90%. We knew it wasn't going to address every single event. But, you know, addressing most of the events, and it also is designed to reduce the amount of sediments. If you look at the water quality there, it's dramatically better during rain events than it used to be. It used to be like, even the slightest rain, I've got pictures of a drizzle where it's mud coming out of the woods. We don't have that anymore. So really significant event, it's still, you know, I mean, there's just only so much you can do, but it is better than it was. I can tell you that.
Commissioner Warnock, maybe it goes without saying, but I think it's important to note that the reason why that vegetation has to stay there is to allow it to establish a root base to stop the erosion around it. And before we started that project, that was one of the major issues we had before you came along, doing any kind of restoration down there. Before we got the grant money, we were going to try to do some things, and the cost of what they required us to do on the bank restoration made it cost prohibitive. And part of that is allowing an established root base to get into the bank system so that it doesn't erode.
Yep, so there's all that netting and all the wood that's in there. The wood's actually designed to decompose over time, but that's all designed to prevent erosion. A big part of that is letting that root base get established, and it takes a few years for that. So south of the bridge will be kept cleared once it's all established. And they wanted two to three years of allowing that to grow to get established. Once, but everything north of the bridge is designed to leave a buffer zone of as far as like 20 or 35 feet on the south side of the creek, and then about 10 to 15 feet on the north side of the creek. North side being the basketball side, and the other side being the south side.
Well, with that growth until it gets established, you're just asking for trouble for kids in that park, snake infestation, you know? You're not, I mean, you can't control everything, but that's something you got to think about, you know? You're asking for trouble.
And honestly, until we did this, the woods came down...
Oh, I know.
I mean, you actually had a similar situation with sticker bushes and stuff. This is all native vegetation now.
Okay.
All right. Chief?
During the period of July 9th through to 23rd, we had nine criminal arrests, five of which were for controlled danger substances, for drugs, one for a failure to appear, one for a fugitive from another area, and two for traffic offenses. In addition, we had two DWIs, and the officers wrote 35 citations. In past meetings, we had some questions raised about uniforms and where we were in the process of searching to find a replacement company. Right now, and I'm knocking on wood because it appears that that search is over. We have someone that will replicate what we have. So the search for that is kind of ended, and hopefully by the end of this month, we will have it definitely in writing. In addition to that, the second of the two officers, of the two new officers, will be patrolling alone with a high level of monitoring by other officers, and that is to get him accustomed to the layout of the town, functioning on his own. And that will bring us to a full complement of officers. And that should go for the next couple of weeks until we determine if he's a suitable, completely suitable fit for the department. And with that being said, there's no more information for me to report unless there's any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Town Administrator?
Three quick items for you. The Ethics Board will be having another meeting on July 30th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. We'll be putting that up on our website, but I wanted to take the opportunity to bring it up here tonight, so it's Tuesday, July 30th, at 6:00 PM. To follow up in what the Mayor and Commissioner Arthur Reith had asked me, because inquiring minds want to know in the community, yes, the car wash, as I had reported a couple of months ago, is going to be doing some significant renovations. They're going to be tearing down the existing car wash, moving it over a couple of feet and moving it back a couple of feet, and that will afford them the ability to put two automated car wash systems in there to increase it from one to two. So that's exciting, that that's going to be upgraded. The other item is Bernie Chiamento from the Board of Appeals, because he's taken on a job with the Cecil County Liquor Control Board, had to submit a resignation from the Board of Appeals. So we have two vacancies on the Board of Appeals at this point. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. That concludes my report. Oh, and while I'm at it, I'll turn it over to Judy, if you guys have any questions on the activity report that the staff provides for you. You know, in the next day or two, whatever, if you want to reach out to Judy with any questions of clarification.
Board, any questions? All right. Moving forward into my report, obviously due to a canceled flight, I missed the last town meeting. Do apologize for that. I did want to give a huge shout out to the Rising Sun Little League All-Star Senior Softball Team. Yesterday, they defeated New York, and about five minutes ago, they defeated Delaware. So they are still in it, so super excited for them. Huge shout out to Commissioner Arthur Reith and Braun, who went and gave a support donation for their trip to Massachusetts on behalf of the board. We got some great photos, and they spent some time with the girls. It was just a really great time, and once they come back, I can't wait to host them and present them with citations on behalf of our board. I also wanted to give a huge shout out to our town clerk, Judy Melton, who officially took over as the secretary for the Harford Cecil Maryland Municipal League chapter. Judy did an amazing job selling 50/50 tickets, and all the funds that we collect for that actually go towards our scholarship program. And she did an amazing job selling almost $175 worth of tickets in two hours. So she definitely did a lot of selling. I officially took over as president of that organization, and I look forward to leading it over the next year. I did want to say also that Rise and Grind is still in it for the Keep It Local contest that ends this Friday. They are the only business in Cecil County still in the contest, so give them a vote. You can always check out my Facebook page or Rise and Grind's Facebook page, the link to vote for them. If they do win, it would be a $10,000 check that they would get for winning that contest. I did also want to say, last but not least, this past Thursday, we hosted the Lieutenant Governor of Maryland. I did want to sincerely thank our board for taking the time. Every single one of us were there and hosted the Lieutenant Governor. We took a tour of Main Street, talked about Main Street revitalization and economic development. By the end of this year, this board has been relatively responsible for close to a 90% redevelopment of buildings on Main by the end of this year. So that's a huge deal. The Lieutenant Governor also spent some time at Rise and Grind and enjoyed the Lieutenant Governor's raspberry tea, Boyd Rutherford's raspberry tea. But it was just a great time, and I sincerely thank the board, who all, just like myself, have daytime jobs and were able to swing it and come and host the Lieutenant Governor. He is actually the first Lieutenant Governor to formally enter our town limits since our founding in 1860. So it was a big deal. And that came directly from the Cecil County Historical Society, so that's where I got the information from. But that is the end of my report. Commissioner Arthur Reith?
I just also want to jump on what you just said and thank the Lieutenant Governor for stopping by that day and his staff. Thanks to the local business leaders that came out that day also. Thank you to the Vanderhoff family for showcasing what they've done there and explaining to the Lieutenant Governor why they believe in the town and the amount of money they've invested in this town to go forward. Thanks to Bill Kautz, a member of our county council, for coming down, showing his support for Rising Sun. And Mayor Marion, thank you for all the work and all the contacts you did to pull that together to convince him on his way back to Annapolis from Wilmington, Delaware, to stop here and see what we've got going on. This whole board has been very diligent in letting the governor and Lieutenant Governor know about Rising Sun. He knows Rising Sun, and he knows the faces, because we spend a lot of vacation time and family time out working for this town. Don't forget, we're residents, too. We're not just setting up here and making the big dollars to be on the board, you know? We're residents of this town.
You're not just a penny?
So, you know, and we want him...
He says dollars, he means dollars.
We want him here. Dollar, I'm sorry. But yeah, all kidding aside, it was great to have him here, to see the town. Jane, thanks for the article you did on it. We made the front page, and that's a big deal, having, you know, the governor was here a few years ago, went to Kilbury Cream, but Lieutenant Governor Rutherford came to the town of Rising Sun, and we sent him away with, the Vanderhoffs sent him away with donuts and muffins and some other swag, some Rising Sun swag to put on his desk. So there's good pictures out there, check it out, but that was a lot of, a lot of work went into getting him to stop in here. That was a big deal for our town. We're on the map. So changing gears, one other thing that I want to preach a little bit about, again, is our trash and our recycling. A lot of big deals made about the cost of water in town, but one of our big costs is trash, and it's not getting any cheaper either. It's part of what our tax dollars go to, you know? We used to have that as a separate bill, and working with this board and the town administrator, we blended that into the town taxes. A perk for living here, you don't have to pay your trash separate. It's part of the town tax of living here. But we've got to get very serious about recycling and what you put in recycle, because if they deny it, and that whole truckload becomes trash, the price goes up. So I'm going to ask Judy again to put out the single stream recycling and trash guidelines for Cecil County, what we can put in there. The acceptable materials, it's a big list, but the non-accepted materials is a short list, but we got to have it. Must be an emergency. So Calvin, do you have any dollar amounts of what it's cost us for trash?
Um...
I know I'll put you on the spot here, but just to give...
We pay about a little bit over two and a half times more when recycling is processed as trash. We pay about two and a half times more than if it were properly processed as recycling. And I was just, while you were talking, because you had said you wanted to bring this up, I was checking some emails here, and the county rate, the desired rate for recycling in a community is 5.5%, and we're only going at about 1%. So as a community, we're, as we keep saying, we're shooting ourselves in the foot by not being as diligent with the recycling. And really, it's just, the number one culprit is not always necessarily things being put in there that can't be recycled. It's things being put in there that are not properly cleaned and are contaminated and, you know, get mixed. You know, we have a habit, I guess, as a society, of thinking that everything that is plastic could go in there. And the position that any recycling yard takes, which I didn't realize this, is when they dump that recycling, they, a human or a group of people go through that recycling to sort it out. And it's, they don't have a problem going in and picking one or two things out, if you understand what I'm saying, in terms of volume. But it's like anything else, once they spend a lot of time in a load, they just say, forget it, and they scratch the entire load. And that is what's hurting us, is the volume of stuff that's not being cleaned and some miscellaneous items, it's actually costing us two and a half times more to get rid of.
Let me just run down some of the non-accepted items. Paper or cardboard covered by wax, plastic, or food, that's a big no-no. Not all cardboard and paper is recyclable. Facial tissues, napkins, paper towels, scrap metal, pots, pans, propane cylinders, ceramics, dishes, cookware, window glass, plastic bags, styrofoam, motor oil and antifreeze, but you can take it to the dump, to recycle it there. To recycle it there, but you can't put it in your recycling can. Plastic knives, forks, and spoons, bubble wrap, plastic electronics. Or VHS tapes, if anybody's got any of those things. So things like that you can't put, and then. So.
You still got a VCR, though?
Eight-track tapes, okay.
So there's, there's a lot of things that can go, but those are some things, and, and we'll put that list out again. Recently, Chesapeake City got an award for recycling. So I challenge the residents of Rising Sun, let's, let's take that award next time. The county, you know, knows who brings in what, and they track the tonnage, so let's, let's be the next one to get that award for the recycling. Not Chesapeake City or Elkton or the other municipalities, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Braun?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yeah, I have something. Just to make sure that everybody understands, the mayor and the commissioners must be residents of town. To be elected and to serve. There seems to be some question that comes up periodically that. Some members of this board or the mayor are not residents of the town, and that's wrong. So hopefully that clears this up once and for all. As I have nothing else.
Thank you, Commissioner Pearson. Commissioner Warnock, do you have a report?
Yes. First, actually, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to apologize, the earlier I should have held the response to the park until these comments. That's our procedure, so I apologize for putting that out of order, but anyway. Yeah. Your question? So. Yep. So the one thing we have for, coming up for Parks and Rec is on August third. At the Community Fire Company of Rising Sun at approximately eight-thirty, we will be showing Captain Marvel. And the rain date for that, because we pretty much always have rain on movies in the park, is August twenty-fourth, which I assume will have rain, and we'll have to figure out a rain date for that date, I'm pretty sure. Just because that's, that's the way it is, and that's the way it's been this year, certainly. As far as the park, I've gotten a lot of kind of comments and feedback and such on Veterans Park in particular. The area between kind of the parking lot and the playground, we're having, we've, it's just been so wet the last two years, we're having a lot of trouble. We've been trying to get in there and improve the drainage. And we just can't get equipment there, so we've actually hand dug it a few times, a trench. It looks atrocious, but at least it's allowing it to drain out some. It keeps filling back in, so. I think we're going to have to hand dig it again, it looks like, after the latest round of storms, and that's, as soon as we can get a period of time dry enough. Whatever that's going to take, that we can get in there with some equipment, we're going to trench that out and put some pipe. In that area to try and drain some of the water away from that sidewalk, also right from where the benches are. So we're going to put an underdrain system under the sidewalk and then just drain it down towards the wetlands area as much as we possibly can. So we've got some ideas on what to do there. We just can't get to it. Additionally, we've been having trouble mowing. It's, there's some areas of, the water's been standing for so long that they just, they can't take a mower into them without getting the mower stuck or tearing things up, and. So we've, we've been having some real serious challenges with the, the water levels and such, and that's, that's actually. Areas that just won't drain. It's just, the ground is just so saturated, like around the basketball court was an area that wasn't even touched as part of the stream bed restoration and all of that. But the area is just so saturated that it won't drain, so we're looking at some, some ideas around some of that too, but. Right now, we're, we can't do a whole lot until it gets dry enough, so it's kind of a catch twenty-two. We can't, we can't solve the drainage problems and, until it drains, and we can't get the. I know, that's. It's, we're not trying to protect the basketball court from anything. We're just trying to, you know, keep people from drowning in it. Eating alive is probably not a good option either. With that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? All right. Could I get a motion for adjournment?
It's been moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.